We can start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, in one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Yep, thanks for reminding. Okay, do we have any public input? We'll start the 30 minutes? Thanks, Esther. Okay, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. Let's see, for May 17th, public board minutes and May 17th, non-public board minutes. Does anybody have any comments or want to make a motion?
I just had one modification. And it was just sort of like the spirit of the conversation. I noticed twice in the conversation about the SRO, it noted, "This will need to move forward," and then up above too, it'll say, "This will need to move forward." You know, I think the board is going to consider it when we consider doing our budgets, so I just want sort of that.
What line are you looking at in particular?
I'm looking, so if you go right before number two, "Next steps were discussed." "Nothing to do now. This will need to move forward."
Okay.
Maybe just say, "This can move forward." Exactly.
The board will consider the need to move forward.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay.
And it says it up above too. It says it two different places.
Okay. Let's see where it is. All right. Do you want to make a motion?
"This will need to be addressed," so it's kind of buried in the middle of this paragraph here.
Oh, I see it.
Okay.
How do you want to change that? Then same thing?
The board will assess the need to address?
Perfect, yep.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to?
Kate?
I'll move to approve.
Selena has something.
Last page of the minutes, Ashley Healy's last name has an E-Y.
Good catch. Oh, thank you. Okay. Is what I read.
Her leaving classroom.
All right, does somebody want to make the motion for these?
I'll move to approve as amended.
Okay.
I can second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Eric? Okay. Great. Was your motion to do non-public at the same time or no? I don't think you said that.
Oh, because we have an ask for changes, yeah.
So let's do it separately. Okay. Any changes on the, on the non-public minutes, or does anybody want to make a motion?
Yep, I think they look good. I'll move to approve.
Okay. Thank you. Move a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
I really have to abstain on that one.
Abstain, yeah.
I don't want to watch the video.
Okay, great. All right. There we go. Okay, great. So now we'll move on to the superintendent report, the financial report.
So, in your board pack, we gave you our financial position. And over the last month, we, we added expenses of $122,454. And that was mostly through relieving some encumbrances. We had unpaid position for a family leave. We also unencumbered a long-term sub that was no longer needed, and we did also receive the trust reimbursement. So, we are now looking at fund, a projected fund balance at the end of the year of $214,698. And Molly just also asked me, she believes that she forgot and did not change the building repairs and maintenance trust box.
Okay.
And the amount there is incorrect, so we will get that corrected number for you.
Okay.
And give that to you.
Is it a big change or no?
Well, I, I think she didn't take, take out the, the trust that we just got back. So she believes the number should be 197, 471, but she's going to double-check that for you and get that to you.
Okay, great.
So, based on the fund balance, a projected amount of 214, 698, this is when I would ask the board to consider requests from administration. One was the tile that changed, and correct me, I think that was 10,000?
It was about 10,000 more, yep. I'll give the exact numbers for you. And that was- The new tile total was $30,000, sorry, $30,042.
And we budgeted?
20,000.
20, so the price increases by, they're asking for it to come from fund balance because it's changed since we budgeted last, almost a year ago now, or eight months ago. So it sounds like it's actually almost $11,000 to this.
Yeah, and we did actually get two quotes this time to see if we could get, and this is the lower of the two quotes. We're actually going with not the company. We originally got the quote up because theirs went up significantly, so this is the cheaper of the two, which we ought to get. There are not a lot of tile companies. It's almost monopoly.
And then I think you had one more for a new.
Yep, the, we have an audiometer that we use in the health office for hearing. It's, we do it with a lot of kids, but it's also a part of the special ed referral process because you always want to ensure that that's not one of the concerns, and ours has died. And so, to repair it was $1,600, to buy a brand-new one is $17,55, and ours is six-years-old, so it just seems to make sense just to replace it with a, a new one at this point.
That's why.
I know. But the other one had a component that was a little bit more advanced that we never used anyway. It was meant more for like an office, so it just made sense not to get that model because we don't use that component, and this was almost comparable in price and brand-new. So those are the, that's the additional item that was not discussed at the May board meeting. Okay.
I feel like we talked about that one before, didn't we? Talked about that?
Different vision.
Vision, we had a vision mission. Yep. Okay.
It's the other one.
Yeah.
I guess the other thing is, did we want to do any money for the architect and?
So, I will cover that in 7.2, but we wouldn't, I believe at this point, need to pull it out of fund balance because we have now paid for the money that was set aside two years ago in the budget, and we have some money that'll be used up, and I think that'll cover the upcoming expenses.
Okay.
You certainly could put another up to 20,000 in case, and if it doesn't get spent, then it doesn't get spent, which isn't a bad idea. So, I would welcome conversation you guys to talk about that.
I would add that.
Whatever you thought, but we do have much of the money that the board did last year.
Yep.
We have and will be using that up. So that's what I was going to talk about in 7.2, but not, because we're talking about it now.
Yeah. Do I see that in the summary?
No, because that was two budgets ago.
Okay.
Right. I would say that when I talked to Brad, middle of last week, I spoke with Brad from, from Banwell, and he did say that in the original contract, there was like a caveat or a thing for unexpected funds, and that's often like travel or a meeting that you weren't anticipating or things like that, and that isn't budgeted for in the, that was like, it was all like pre-bond services is what this invoice is for, what this quote was for, and he did say that that original proposal did say that there could be unanticipated costs based on site visits and things like that. So, I don't, I kind of agree with Esther, might be worth that conversation.
Again, the board can always say up to a certain number, and you don't spend any of it, then you can give it back, you know, at the end of next year, or you might only spend 5,000 of it, and then you would only spend five, if, so, those are options for you to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I do think next full year will be our big push in terms of getting that out to the state. I would, if Molly could give us sort of a reckoning, because I don't really understand the money, you know, what spent, what got budgeted two, two times ago and what's in the contract now, so.
Yep, the board approved up to, I think, 65 last year.
65,000.
And we have 50-
51 left.
51 left.
And does he just invoice monthly?
Well, that's part of why we're-
Yeah.
It also depends, because sometimes he'll go months without doing something, and then there'll be a big invoice because he spent a lot of time in, you know, two weeks or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
So this will continue covering those expenses that were in that pre-bond, architectural designs, questions and answers, you know, those things that the invoice was originally approved for, for the board. We just didn't move as quickly as we thought, I think, on some of those things because of the timing of the state and that application. So, that money still stands there for that, but certainly, you bring up a good point, Kate.
Yeah, Brad was the one that shared it with me. He just said it's something for us to be thinking about. Do we want to do that now, you think?
I think, I mean, I would love to see what other people think, but.
What are our options, other than handling it now?
I think what we'll do, so, the way it's working right now is, we have a meeting on the books with him every month. We, and then we cancel it if it's not needed. But what's happening right now is like, next month, he'll give us a new draft, and then, you know, Kate and everybody will comment on it, and then he might go back and make changes, and so, what we're doing is prepping to have that more particular plan go to the state next summer.
Right.
Yeah.
And in addition to that, this is the time you need to decide on fund balance, money towards it.
Right.
Like, because once this meeting is done, we can't go back, so this is the one to decide that particular issue. And again, if we spend it, we spend it. If we don't, it just sits there and goes back.
Can I just ask one more? So that's what I meant by what are our options?
Right, sure.
We don't have an option?
Not, not really. Well, the option is you either decide to put some money aside for it in case or not.
The option is now or never.
That's flexible.
Just want to make sure.
As far as this, as far as this fund balance.
Yeah.
Now or never.
Piece to the, the current proposal that we're talking about that was already approved over a year and a half ago, does include like civil engineers and mechanical engineers, not to the extent of like a final draft, but getting their input on some of the design processes, because you want to ensure that they're going to work cohesively. So he does the architectural, the bigger, like the 30,000-foot V, right, and then you have to have like, what are the site implications? And so, because if he designed something that the site can't handle, we're going to want to know that. So, there are costs built into the current proposals, the pre-bond fees that we have already approved, that does include some of that. I just want to, I think what Brad was trying to say is, those were also given to us two years ago. All of their prices have also gone up, as has everybody, and so, when we're talking about that unexpected money, I think that's what he's saying, like, those things could have gone up substantially in the past 18 months, right? And so it's just something I think for the board to consider. We've seen everything else go up. Is that something we're going to run into with this particular process? Okay.
Okay, another question. So, if we plotted out over the course of the several years before we actually get to putting out like a warrant article, people say, voters say no, we have to think about how do we make a lot of capital expenditures on things that we, we know we're going to have to do if we don't get that through. What does that look like in terms of getting advice from people so that, I just want to have a plan B?
Yeah, well, we would go back to that original plan that started this whole conversation about what the ten, the year, the five-year life expenditures, the priority areas that we talked about. I want to say like October or November.
Facilities.
So we had a facilities management assessment on the whole thing, so it says-
So we're good with that, though. We're saying that is set in stone, good, don't need to revisit that.
Not right now, because that's what we're basing this work on, so, but to your point, let's say it failed, then, in the meantime, the board may want to consider looking at that at budget season again and saying, you know what, we're going to put a warrant article for $100,000 renovation construction.
Right.
So if it passes, you've got, you could use that money.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't, you'd have some money there for new boilers, new this, new that. So there's, you would want to be, we would obviously work with legal counsel to make sure the wording of the warrant could go for either or, renovation of a, if the project passed, or renovation if it didn't. So, when you get to the point of the warrant article, my guess is you'd subtract what was in that off the warrant article for the project, so the two added together make the total cost of the project, but I'm not 100% sure. That's why you'd want to-
But that's for like a budget year 2024, 2025, or 25, 26.
Yes.
That's nothing we have to think about now.
So what you would want to think about, I think, in the meantime, is either building up your maintenance trust, which you could use for things if it didn't pass, or, or, that's what I would recommend doing, is putting a separate warrant on there that puts a decent chunk of money in there, so that if it doesn't pass, you can start to go back to that plan, maybe have a reassessment and be like, okay, what are our priorities? What do we have to fix? We've got 400,000 in here now, from two years of warrant articles adding to what was in here already. So you have, that's a Lester Cuff's point, right? That's his point, is that planning piece. So if this fails, you've got at least a pocket of money to do some stuff with that, because the building's old.
You can also like EEI, when they presented the facilities analysis with Banwell in 2019.
I think so, yeah.
They did a nice job of saying like, they can support, like, if there wasn't a renovation, wasn't the decision, or the town decided they didn't want to go into construction, they can support around like, here are the things you want to do together because they make sense to do together. Like, if you're going to do HVAC, you're also doing this because you're going to be building, it's going to save you money, it's, they, the systems work together, so it becomes efficient over time. Or like, this is the one you have to do, because if you don't do this first, the domino effect, like, they can guide you in some of that, because that isn't our area of expertise, and they're not looking at, you know, that's like a smaller fee. It would be like a consulting fee, really, to kind of sort of guide you and saying like, here are the priorities you have to do, and they're really good about like ADA is going to be your number one thing. You have to make sure you're meeting the laws and the, and the RSAs, and then here's the things that are going to sustain your building for longer periods of time in a way that's good for kids. Like, they're good about that kind of stuff. That helps a little bit.
Well, it does. Thank you for that.
So, it's hard to just throw like a number out there with a-
So, these are the ones that I would recommend if you're considering, a motion for up to 11,000 for tile.
Yep, okay.
Up to 1,800 for the audiological machine. Is that the right language?
Yes, audiometer.
Audiometer. And then up to whatever you all want to talk about or think about for costs related to the renovation project. Could that be auditor safe language? I don't want to make it so narrow that, you know.
Do we have any, what will be our basis for coming up with that number?
I know. So he, I did, I did ask him at one point.
I think for all the pre, all the pre-stuff, it was right around 65,000, which is why the board approved that.
Correct.
And then, so if you add it to that, things have gone up, what, between 5 and 10%, right, services? So if you say, okay, we had some services built in, do we do a 5% to 10% on that 65?
For services, I think it's be more than 5% to 10%.
So, again, I know, we have talked about between that 20 and $30,000 range for those kinds of increases around what was already approved.
Then it becomes encumbered, and then it's returned if we don't use it.
If you don't use it. And that's why you say up to, because you might only use 4,000 of it. You can't use more than what you've, what you've stated, but you can use less, and then it's, you would see it in the budget line, like this time at the end of the year that we didn't use, and that's how it would work.
Are you looking for something?
Well, he had just given, yeah, he's saying, if you, a fee estimate for meetings, about $260 for each two-hour Zoom meeting, 650 for each in-person meeting, but this is really his time, not necessarily the enrollment study or the architect and all of that, so.
An enrollment study right now runs between 5 and 10,000, depending on what company and the size of the building and those kinds of things.
I understand the scope of what's possibly needed. Do you guys feel?
So I think if we think about the timeline, correct me if I'm wrong, in January 24, you're submitting like a one-page document to the state to say, we are going to be requesting
Yes.
state aid. However, by July 1, the same year, you are submitting your full plan. So if you think about that, you're almost one year away from full plan and submission. So what needs to happen between now and then is pretty significant, because when you're submitting it to the state, you have to have like really close, accurate pricing, you have to have a much more detailed plan, it's going to include incidentals and soft costs, like it's a, we're not even close to that right now. So in terms of like, the evolution of what needs to happen in a little over a year is pretty significant in order to really submit to the state something that's super comprehensive.
You definitely need the enrollment studies for the application.
Yep.
So I would recommend at the least to put up to $10,000 for that part of it, because that's the quotes we've gotten in between 5 and 10, and that was again, last fall, this past, last October time.
So, it's within this budgeting cycle that all of that, that this-
In order to get the application in July.
I'm just trying to remember the dates, because I don't have it right in front of me.
July 1 of 2024.
Okay.
Can I ask a silly question, which is, why wouldn't we save, maybe retain more than we think, like be generous? Is that because it will be less money back to the taxpayers? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
You can't expend, whatever you approve up to, we can't return until the end of next year if you didn't spend it.
Right. And right now, it's like 214-ish.
It's, yeah, 214.
Because there'll be a change also, but, so, I mean, I see in previous years, it's 50 to 100 amount retained in that bottom rate box.
So the, that, those boxes are, if you are actually taking part of your leftover year's money and putting it into your trust?
Those are separate warrant articles, so there was like a warrant article-
The furthest right column is what's returned to the taxpayer.
So, the even numbers were not items that were approved by the board, they were approved by the voters on the warrant. So there's $50,000 into the maintenance fund or into-
Got it.
So that's what those numbers were, because that has to come right off the top, or bottom, I should say, of the fund balance, because that's how the warrant articles are awarded, so it's not a tax impact. They've already been impacted by that, if you take it off the fund balance.
So I would throw out something like 30,000, 20,000 for time and 10 for enrollment.
Okay.
What do you, what do you guys think? I mean, from having experience?
I think up to 30 is a reasonable amount to get the packet complete by July 1. And again, you'll have another budget you'll be creating, you may be able to, you may build in very specific costs that you can pay April, May, June, should the budget pass, right?
Okay. I think if Brad thought it was going to be a significant, like 100,000, I think that's exactly what he would have said to me, is like, Kate, you should be having a conversation about it being much more. He just said, I want to draw your attention to this line, and the, I do believe Brad would have been really transparent about that, and then like if he was concerned that it was going to be, you know, 67,000, 80,000, 100,000, I think he would have said something to me like that, but he did draw my attention to it, but not in a way of like, alarm, $100,000. It was not that kind of conversation. Yeah, I mean, I think that's reasonable. So it would be, we have to, it'd be 11, up to 11,000 for tile, 1,800 for the audiometer, and then 30,000, and what's the wording on that? 30, up to 30,000?
Up to 3,000 for items related to the renovation project.
Yeah, services, services relating to the renovation project.
Which would be enrollment, that's why we word it that way.
Services will cover fraud.
If the, you know, electrician, all of that.
And does that cover what Lester was saying about giving us, ourselves a buffer for the future, or is that?
No, you would have to do that in a warrant article. That's what Lester's looking for, what I was talking to earlier, warrant article to go into the maintenance trust.
Okay, so that's different from this.
Yes.
Okay.
But we can think about that later.
Yes, because that would be on the march, that would be on the march vote.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion? Or have any more?
You can do them separately. That might be cleaner.
Okay.
I can make a motion, I just don't remember all of them.
Okay.
I want to make a motion with some whatever others said.
Kind of right on the deadline.
Do you want to do them separately?
Yeah, let's do them separately.
Okay.
So the first one would be up to 11,000 for tile.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. And then, do we need to describe what we're doing with, like?
To spend up 11,000.
Just to spend up to 11,000.
On tile.
On tile.
Okay.
I think I just said it.
Yep.
I will second that.
Second it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The second one is up to 1,800 for the audiometer.
I'd make a motion that we spend up to $1,800 for the audiometer.
Okay. And a second?
I will second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, okay. And then?
What do we want to call this one, Kate, just before I?
So, up to 30,000 for items related to renovation.
Is that, is that?
I would say service.
Broadening, okay.
Yeah.
For services related to construction.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we spend up to $30,000 for services related to construction.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And all in favor?
All right. Aye.
Yeah, just before we move on, Michelle, I just have a question about, so this fund balance of 214, which I understand isn't anymore, but is that like fairly normal among the district elementary schools?
Well, it depends on the size of the school and the size of the budget. Some schools are in a, some of our schools are much smaller.
Yeah.
And they have very little to give back. Some, as you can see, your, what you have given back has, has varied year over year, depending upon the needs of the school at the time and the budget that was there. This is actually relatively on the low side.
Yeah.
For us, yeah.
Which we knew that going in, remember in October? We basically froze the budget because of the outward changes in the contract and that took a big time.
This actually feels so good, because I think-
It does feel large.
Are we going to make it?
Yeah.
This feels really good, to me. I think too, when I think about the, particularly the 21, 22 and the 20, 21, those are large amounts of money to return. The 20, 21 was really the COVID year, we got a ton of federal money, so we didn't spend a lot of it.
Right.
And then last year, we couldn't fill positions, if you remember. I think we ended up with like six positions that we didn't fill, which is why there was such a large return at the end.
Right.
Because I remember being like, wow, that's a lot of money, and trying to like understand why, and then look, you know, be able to cross your budgets and be like, well, that makes sense. It just seemed a lot of money to be returning.
And the variations that you can see are also for revenues that we might receive that are really not expected. Like, some of you guys have been here long enough probably that you'll remember, we'll receive money from Health Trust as, as excess revenue from there, and so, so that's what can kind of pop your fund balances to.
Okay, okay. Anything else before we move on to the 4.2 summer hiring process?
Yep. Every time this year, I ask the board to consider giving the superintendent hiring rights in July and August, in case we have a position that either becomes open, maybe someone's interviewing, we don't know, to try to get the board back together. Sometimes in the summer it's crazy, and then we lose good candidates. Case in point right now is our director of special ed. We, at this juncture, have not found a suitable candidate, and so we are continuing to look and shake the, rattle the, everything we know to try and find some strong candidates. But there are other very similar openings in our region, and so, my recommendation just today to Kate and Renee was to go to a one, one-round process, not a first-round interviews and a second-round interviews, because we're losing the candidate, because they get offered a job, and they don't want to wait till the second round because they're not sure, do you know what I mean? And so, and because there's not very many viable candidates, it's pretty easy to interview. We have two more viable candidates that, hopefully an interview next week, and if one is strong, I would love to be able to move quickly, so it doesn't get scooped up. So that's why we asked for hiring rights in the summer. So that does require a motion by the board to allow the superintendent to hire, you can say, from June whatever to August whatever. You can set the dates, and that allows us to do that, which I would recommend, particularly in this case, because we're losing Selena.
Rub it in.
Can I ask you, so what, are you comfortable with an interview process? Even share it or not, but are you comfortable with an interview, one-round interview process?
I am, because there's just not very many candidates.
But is that a good thing?
Usually we screen out. If we don't find someone, we'll go, there's a bunch of options we would consider.
Okay.
Doesn't mean necessarily we would hire someone. We might hire someone for interim, Doesn't mean necessarily we would hire someone, we might hire someone for interim, for a year.
Okay.
So there are different processes, but the special ed and administrators are not, they're, it's a very shallow pool. People aren't, we've, I mean.
Leaving in droves, it's okay, you can say that, right?
You know, they're just.
Giving the industry.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just not wanting to go into education as administrators, whether it's special ed or principals or central office folks. It's, it's not a, right now, New Hampshire isn't considered a friendly state for public education, and that's deterring people to apply at other states that are just as close, Massachusetts, Vermont, Maine. So that's where they're going.
Does this position get a one-year contract?
We would only give a one-year contract for this position, yes.
Why is that?
Because we, because we, I have a feeling we're going to be at an interim anyway, which would be an automatic one-year.
Yeah.
Unless one of these, you know, a couple of candidates coming up, I have no idea, they might be great. We would offer them just a regular, a one-year contract, like we offer most principals, administrators, the first year we bring someone on. They usually are one-year until we feel comfortable to say, we're going to offer you a two-year or a three-year. But generally speaking, we only do a one-year in the very first year.
How far, how far out are you looking for people? Is it like just in New Ham, like I didn't, I just have.
No, we, we've gone everywhere. As far as, we even went to what's called Education Week, which is a national publication. We never seem to get anyone from that, and it's expensive to put it in there, but we thought, you never know.
Right.
Just like we got the principal for Main Street from Arizona. But that person was looking to come to New Hampshire.
Right.
So they were looking locally on our Ed New Hampshire jobs and things like that. So even though that position also was in Ed Week, she saw it because she was looking in New Hampshire on those specific Ed job websites.
Can I just, one of the things I think, like, if you, you almost think if you're going to hire somebody for like a shorter period of time, they may be bringing a spouse, partner, significant other with them, they have to find a job. Now you're only there for a year. It's a big change, right? So otherwise, you're looking at like a local pool. That was the only reason I said, do you ever consider doing a more in-depth process to find the person that you want to extend as a differentiator, a multi-year contractor?
Yeah. Normally the process, I mean, the first, the first time you guys went through it, it was a very in-depth process. There was first round, second round, and there's no one people wanted to move forward with, which I'd rather have that than ours, than take someone that isn't, people don't think is a great fit. So that's why I say we may end up in an interim position anyway and looking at, begging, literally, oops, sorry, talking to some retirees we know that maybe are interested in bringing those people back that we know have the expertise and the level of information that, but they don't want the job job, but they're willing to do it for a year.
That's a good idea.
So we can, so we're thinking about all kinds of options. But today, two more viable candidates on paper came in, so we'll see. As we all know, sometimes on paper isn't what you get, but. So we are thinking of a bunch of different options to not, to ensure that eventually we get a person that's a great fit here permanently. If that doesn't come around through the normal interview process, then we would probably look for an interim and probably start talking, we already are talking to some retirees, you know, because this is something, because they can only do 32 hours if they're retired, or they can freeze their retirement. So then we have to have an eight-hour person fill in. So it gets a little complicated that way when you're looking at bringing in retirees, as often there's restriction on our, number of hours they can work. But that's not impossible.
Okay.
That's where it's at. We do have a part, we do have someone willing to do some part-time work that we know is very qualified and great, but does not want full-time. So that's kind of the match we would put with maybe a retiree to fill that, to make it whole, if we get in that situation. But again, this vote gives me to lock these people down quickly.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion or have any more discussion room?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Second. Does that move?
No, I'll move, I'll move too. Allow, I guess, superintendent to offer hiring without board approval, or?
Have hiring rights for the summer.
Yeah.
Should we say, should we put dates on it?
Through.
I think we've done it in the past.
Put dates.
And just because of purposes of what we're talking about, I, it would probably behoove us to say effective tomorrow, the 8th, until, you know, August 31st, because I feel like if it was after that, we could get the board together, everyone would be back.
Yep, I think that makes sense. If we just offer the job right in the interview? Okay, so do you want to say that again, just with the dates in it?
Yeah, I would move to allow the superintendent to approve hiring from June 8th through August 31st.
Okay.
2023.
Second that, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, school board calendar.
We have the draft calendar, I did look at this with Chris.
We did meet together as a full team, and as of now, there are no boards that are running the same night. This year there are, so that gets hard, particularly during budget season. The only conflict Chris has right now is that December 13th, which is only, it's not a board meeting, it's the initial presentation that the administration does to the FAC, and I said, I think it's fine as long as there's somebody from finance here that's worked with them. And then if you flip it over, the very last day, he asked me to move that meeting up to the, so we don't run into what we ran into this year, having a meeting when school's out. But it had, he asked me to move it to Thursday, because it's already a board meeting on Wednesday, the, the second week. So in order to fit it in that week, we would have to move it to Thursday. Other than that, all of them are on that Wednesday with the snow date for the budget. I did put to be determined for the public hearing, again, because Chris has some boards, and so one board is working on, because he has both, both districts that have town meetings. So he's working with Brentwood and this to make sure that there's enough time to have it and a snow date.
Okay.
Within the RSA.
Got it. So do we need to vote on this?
You just need, you can make a motion to approve it.
Just make, okay. All right, does anybody have any questions, comments? Anybody want to make a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the SMS school board meeting schedule for 2023 to 2024 as proposed.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Ken. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Ken. Again, as we know, you can always change it if you run into something, but at least we can put this up on the webpage so people can start planning.
Okay, move on to board reports, building committee.
No update, we're going to meet on Tuesday with, at his half.
I guess, did, I don't know if you have any update, did you talk to Brad?
I did, but just briefly about like where we were with our invoices and just like steps. He was excited for, he's actually excited to come to the meeting, he's actually going to come.
Okay.
He's going to be in the area anyways, like, he kind of wanted to be here to roll it out and was excited for it.
Okay. Sounds great.
Great. Okay. So that's it for?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to the policy committee, Sophie?
Yeah. So there's only one thing that I was a little bit confused about that I didn't talk about with the policy committee, because it was specific to Stratum, but there's one policy that we already kind of had, JCA. So I don't know who this is a question for, but in reviewing the policies that we have that was similar to that versus the one that was proposed for everybody else, the one that was for everybody else was a little bit more in-depth and seemed more comprehensive to, to me. So I don't know if we want to try and adopt that one or just keep the one that we have and not look at the other one. Yeah, it's about the change of class or school assignment best interests and manifest hardship. I'm not really sure where to go from here, if you'd like me to expand on what the differences are or why, I would think about the other one, or if you want to read them, or what would be helpful for right now.
Is it okay if I add a little bit of context to that particular one?
That would be helpful, yeah.
So if you can look in the summary, there was a lot of RSAs that kind of guided this change in policy. Our old policy, the reason, I don't know why Stratum is the only one that had it. Maybe when we did that massive summer, remember, we took a whole day at the SAU, weren't you there? Because Stratum was so behind in policies.
It was Erin.
I don't think I was there. Yeah.
It was like 50 policies in a day, I'd just go, we just have to meet, because we didn't have any. So I bet this was in that pile, I'm guessing. Yeah, it was a little, it was a long day. But the biggest, the biggest change is that they had a sample, just like it says, NHSBA, which is the school board association. Then they would do that sample, JEC, and recommended the district to do the same. So we had to, we tried to follow those recommendations, because they have legal counsel Will, who's on their staff, who, this is his job, to take the RSAs and then translate them into policy. So some of the limitations that Stratum has are the more specific in that policy from before are, don't exactly align with the RSA, because it may be too restrictive. Really, the purpose in this was the legislature and then wanted it to be, I don't know if easier is the right word, but less cumbersome on the parent's side to prove manifest hardship. So that language in the Stradums has a few more hoops, if you will, that parents may have to go through to prove hardship. The legislature's intent of that new law was really to loosen that up for parents, to make it easier to say exactly what this policy says, is that this school isn't the best fit. I'd like to go to this school, and even if that's a private school. Or in the past, sometimes we've been able to say, we have another school in district that might be a great fit, so we, we don't pay tuition, we kind of put a chip in that bank. So if Stratum has a situation, then I would go to say New Fields and go, remember when? You know, we took the kids from New Fields and didn't charge you tuition. We're cashing that chip in now, we have a student that now we think would be a better fit at New Fields or wherever. That was, so we had a little more control, if you will, about those kinds of conversations, offering where it would be. This kind of opens that up. So that was the intent of the law, was to kind of open that up a little bit.
So Esther, I read this, I got a different impression on that. I got almost like the opposite impression. So let me just make sure I understand, we're being asked to withdraw JEC, right?
Yep, that's what this says, yeah.
Right, and then we're being asked to implement JCA as a recommendation to the board.
Yep.
So JCA, here's the thing though, is if you look at, like, page four or five of the policy, I don't know if anybody has it, it's on section 2E. I read this like differently, so to me, there's two steps. The first step is, first of all, you go to the superintendent, right? Superintendent has, really has the ability to make a first call on it. And then there is a, a secondary process, which is taking it to the board. And to me, that's where the manifest educational hardship comes in, where, where it really has to be borne out by the parent. So if you look at E, so what, I don't know if it's section 2, subsection E, however you want to look at it, says the parent guardian shall have the burden of establishing the presence of a manifest educational hardship by clear and convincing evidence, which means that the evidence is highly and substantially more likely to be true than untrue, and the board must be convinced that the contention is highly probable, which is fine. It's creating like a legal burden, the lowest legal burden, if I recall correctly. Jen can set me straight on that one. And then if I look at the other one now, if I look at JC, JEC, it doesn't require that there's any burden of proof for the parent. It just gives the board the, the full authority to make a decision based on what the, what the parent presents.
Yeah, I think it's just the difference between where we sit. So in the past, the superintendent could call the other superintendent and say, hey, here's the deal. Didn't have to go to the board, parent didn't have, the parent just could call me and say, my kid's having trouble. I got a bullying report and it's not a great fit. I could then call Dover superintendent and say, hey, I got a kid that this, this school's not working for anymore, here's why. Can, will you take the kid? I don't have that power anymore, superintendent, has to go to the board.
But I think you do, I, I read it differently, help, set me straight on that. So if I look at, what is it, JCA? So hold on, I was reading actually, sorry, I was reading under B, manifest educational hardship determined by school board and appealed to state board, which is the secondary part. Right, but I get that, that was, that was what I was reading from. But if you go back to A, it's just best interest reassignment. Superintendent still has the full authority for best interest reassignment.
Yeah, I guess I'm focused on the manifest, because the reassignment is usually building level. They don't really deal with it actually.
But it still gives you the, it still gives you the authority. I get it, let me, I can read it if I have to.
Not for manifest hardship, I still have to go to the board.
Procedure, best interest reassignment, subsection 1, procedure, subsection C, I'm probably doing that part wrong.
That's what my understanding was too, the old one went straight to the board, but the new proposed one does give the superintendent authority. That's what I thought it was.
Only for change of assignment, not for manifest.
I honestly felt that JEC also gave, gave the superintendent authority on that, let me, let me look. The only things that were, there were like some just slight differences in that. The other part is that it doesn't ever say anything about a sunset or re, or the ability to reconsider any of this. Is this like, once you make that decision, it's done?
Not in my experience, I don't, I don't think it speaks to any of the way.
It should say that.
And so.
It should say it's on an academic school year basis or something, like, I think people should be able to make a decision every year on that. Or, or it's determined that it's a permanent decision, but there's nothing about this in the policy that, that.
They can appeal it.
I think they can, yeah.
They can keep taking it up.
I, I mean, once it's been determined that, yes, you can go to this school or a private school or whatever.
Oh, got it.
We don't ever revisit it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't ever revisit that in middle school, for example, that we can provide an education to that child.
Yeah.
I don't know how the state board would, I don't, I don't know how, that's probably a legal question. Like, if the state board made a final decision, I don't know that they would, there is an allowance to appeal it again, because you've gone through the appeal process, kind of like when you go through the courts. You finally get to the highest court and that case is done, that's it. I don't know if that's true, Eric.
Okay.
I would think if there was an extenuating, I think if it was the same, and I'm just speaking from what I think, this isn't legal bound by any means, but I think if it's the same situation and you keep trying to deal with the same situation, if a new situation arose, I think you could take that case then. So in other words, if your child in the school wasn't a good fit because they, they didn't like the environment in school, right? Like, the school was too big. That school's not going to change for the rest of high school. So you couldn't come back if you had gone all the way to the state board and they upheld or whatever they did, because the school was too big. It doesn't make sense in my brain that you would, could appeal that same process over and over, the school's too big. But if then the student was bullied and it became a hostile environment, which is different than the size of the school, that's a different case to bring forward, a different reason.
Right.
So I would think.
But that's why I think you want guidance. That's why I think you want guidance in the policy that says, either you make a decision on a yearly basis or you make a decision and that kid's.
But it wouldn't be yearly basis if it was the same issue. So if the school's too big as a freshman and they appeal it all the way up through and the state board says, no, too bad for you, you got to stay there. You couldn't appeal it the next year, I wouldn't think. I think the state board would say, you did this last year, you wasted my time.
I agree.
So I think, even if it's a new issue, then it's a new issue and if you'd go in again with the same policy. I don't, if you put annual, then people are going to think, I can do it annually because the school's too big. And I don't believe that's the case. I could be wrong, maybe you could do it over and over, but I'm imagining the state board as everyone else. If there was just one decision was made on that same issue, the school's too big, it would get pretty frustrating.
I totally agree with that, if it's on the same issue. I think if the issue changes or the issue no longer exists, do you ever revisit it? And it's just not clearly defined in the policy. I'm not saying it can be one way or the other, it's just not defined.
So in my experience, it's been, can be both ways. So I've had experiences where it was, it's for the duration of the rest of the, the grade level experience for like a middle school. It's like the rest of middle school, and then they're going back to their home for high school, because it was an issue with the middle school. I've also had, like, it is actually for a year, because it actually has to do with kids in older grade, they're no going to be in the school and they're going to do that. In my experience, it has been a board decision to say, we are granting this for a year, three years, for, like, that has been my.
The purview of the board to make that determination.
To make the determination for length of, based on the circumstances which the hardship is being requested. That has been my experience, I'm not saying that's the way it has to be, because clearly the policies are being looked at. But similar to what Esther is saying, like, when you have to appeal it for the same reasons, dependent on the actual manifest of the hardship, that has been my experience with boards saying, like, if based on what the manifest is, is suggesting, then they make a determination for length of time. And it's often, part of that conversation is often like, the impacts of transitions on kids, particularly young children. Like, if it's like a year, but then you're going to transition, transition again, you're now, have been in three schools and that's a lot, right? So there's often that, and the board has those hard, hard conversations.
Okay. I don't know what anybody wants to do on this one, but I, I, I am of the opinion, I don't personally agree on the JCA about the burden of proof on parents. I think it's actually far more lenient to the parents in turn. It, it gives more power to the board to make those decisions in JEC. I would rather see that language in there personally. But also, don't need that to happen tonight.
I was going to say, maybe this could just be a first read of this one.
You can do first read of that one and bring it back in the fall, absolutely.
I mean, it's its own.
It's perfectly fine to me, but I just want to make sure that folks understand why.
I want to go through them again now that we've had this conversation.
What I was.
Yeah.
And I can ask Chris for, to get more from you, make a note.
That might be helpful.
You know, it might be helpful to know that when you look at the RSA, it unequivocally states that the parent or guardian shall have the burden of establishing the presence of a manifest educational hardship.
And that's always been that way.
Right. So to say that you don't want the burden of proof to change, the statute calls it out.
The statute calls it out in what, in what language? Do you have it handy?
Yeah, right here. The parent or guardian shall have the burden of establishing the presence of a manifest educational hardship by clear and convincing evidence.
Oh, it says that in the, in the RSA.
It says that in the RSA.
That's not.
Okay, well, I accept that.
Yep.
I didn't have a chance to do all the RSA, so thank you.
Yeah.
I want to just comport the RSA.
I should have said that, I didn't even.
I do disagree though, that I, I would say that if you look at JCA and JEC, I don't think that the intent of the legislature, by making that more lenient and providing the board the ability to make those determinations, that that is what they did.
It could be, that's why I use the word intent.
Okay.
It could also be where they were in other places in the state versus what Stratum had done, given Stratum had a policy.
Yeah, you don't know what legis, I mean, you could look back, but you don't know what legislature sponsored it and why. Usually it's someone got the legislature's ear and had an experience and, and they.
Right.
100%, 100%. 100%, 100%. If I could read, just so that everybody knows what I'm talking about, on, if you look at JEC, on five, under the procedure for manifest educational hardship, so the second, sort of that second test beyond what the superintendent can just do. It says, "The board reserves the legal right to make a determination on whether a given request constitutes a manifest educational hardship and what the corresponding action should be on a case-by-case basis." End of sentence. So that's what's changed in the RSA, is that they're saying now you have to provide clear and convincing evidence.
Which they always have had to do, at least here, and maybe that's because that's been our practice.
Right.
Okay. Anyway, well, maybe the RSA didn't change. I do like also that the transportation costs get shifted to the district.
Yeah.
I appreciate that in the JEC, or in the JCA, that was a change. I already go down that rabbit hole, but...
Are you in favor of JCA or JEC?
I'm in favor of what, the recommendation, because it comports with the RSA. And it also provides benefit for transportation.
Yeah. Okay. Well, are there any other comments or questions about JEC or JCA? Are we ready to make a, like, shall I make a motion to accept JCA? Or do we want further discussion or a second read on it?
I think I want to do a second read, not just person, but if somebody wants to make a motion.
Okay.
You can make a motion if there's a second and then take a vote, or whatever you want to do.
So is there a motion for changing, I'm not gonna say this right, changing to JEC?
You're just saying, to adopt the policy JCA.
Oh, JCA.
Yeah, I will make a motion to adopt JCA.
I thought you just said first read though.
We're just following the procedure.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Is there, can we have discussion now? I'd just like to know if there are, is it there's anybody else who'd like a second read? Besides you, Ken. Before I vote, I'd like to know...
If he wants a second read, I'll support that, but we don't need to rush through it.
Okay. So we still have to vote?
Still have to vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
To adopt policy JCA.
So we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, two, and no?
No.
Okay, three. So we can revisit that one in September?
Yep.
Okay. And then, okay, so that was this one. Do we want to go through the other ones?
Yeah, are there any... No, are there any other questions about the other policies? They all seemed...
Sorry, everybody, I had way too much time in the evenings, apologize.
Eric, you're awesome, don't apologize.
Esther shaking her head. I had a question on the dangerous weapons on school property. I understand this one well, this is the JICI. There's one thing in there that I just don't understand. I understand everything else comporting to RSA. It's the third paragraph, under guns and firearms students. It says, "Weapons under control of law enforcement personnel are permitted." Why do we need that in there?
I'm sorry, what, where is it?
It's the, it's just a sentence, it would be in the third paragraph, under guns and firearms students, first page of JICI.
That does seem odd.
To me, it just, it doesn't, the inclusion isn't necessary, I don't understand why we're putting that in there.
Members of the public who violate this policy, is that what you're saying?
Ma'am?
Weapons under control of law enforcement personnel are permitted. You're saying that's like an obvious?
It's an obvious. Right, it doesn't fall under students.
Adults are already covered.
It's an adult, if they're a law enforcement personnel, do we have any minor law enforcement personnel? Okay.
Just point to me where you're concerned.
It's not a big deal, I just wondered to know why the...
Yeah, it seems like a...
Weapons under law enforcement personnel...
They're already in the adults.
Because it's on school property, is that what you're asking?
No, why do we have that? Adults are allowed to carry, you know, whatever anybody thinks about that.
Because the law enforcement personnel may be out of, maybe be out of there, they're not working.
They're allowed to have it.
Right.
Personal capacity, whether they're law enforcement or not.
That's the only reason, that's all I can think of.
All right, I just don't see that there's a place for it, I don't see why it exists. It doesn't kill me, I just wanted to know why we have it in there. I'm okay to accept it either way, I just was trying to get the background on why we put a sentence in there that doesn't seem germane to the policy.
Okay. So do we want to pass these one by one, or do you have more questions, Eric? Or do you want to, we can pass them one by one, or we can just keep going through them, or...
Up to you guys, whatever you want to do, I do have a couple more questions on the title one.
Okay, let's pass that one, or try, or take a vote on it now and then we'll keep going. So do we have a motion to accept policy EBB school safety, is that the right one? School Safety Program? No, that was nothing.
JICI. I'll make a motion to accept policy JICI.
Second.
Okay.
So just a quick discussion on this, so this is about students carrying weapons?
Yep, it's about weapons on school...
Weapons, anybody carrying weapons. So I'm just confused though, so anybody can bring a weapon, like, when we talk about voting?
Anyone can carry concealed without...
Any adult.
Saying anything into school.
Probably in any, in any fashion, concealed or not.
Yeah.
What you can't do is you can't threaten someone.
Right.
So if you look down, it cannot be used in a threatening, harassing, or intimidating manner.
Okay, that's really what this policy is about, is, yeah.
And that's why I say, that's why I just didn't understand law enforcement, Eric.
You know, Eric, to follow that logic, maybe that's why, because...
So a law enforcement...
A law enforcement could use it in a threatening man, meaning...
Okay.
Now that you say that, maybe that's why it specifically says law enforcement, because they may use it in a threatening manner.
In a lawful, lawful threatening manner. Okay, I got it, that's fine.
Okay.
No, that's helpful.
Any other questions on that one?
This is just a comment, not a question. This is still captioned Exeter Region Cooperative, so you may want to make sure that if you're going to approve this policy, that it says STRATAM at the top.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a first and a second, all in favor of passing this policy?
Aye.
Great, got that one done. What else do you have, Eric?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Legitimately apologize to everybody. For title one, I am, are we a title one school?
No.
No.
We are not. I didn't think so, because we don't meet the criteria for the number of students.
There's targeted, which means it's like a very selective area of school, yes. Brothers can be the whole school.
Hold on, but we're title one on a limited basis?
You get title one funds.
Right, I just said targeted, we are not whole school, we are...
We are a title one school, we're not a title one whole school.
Right.
So we do get title one grant funds, a small amount.
Target assist, it's $7,000.
Other schools might get $100.
Okay.
Right, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I looked, the only criteria for designating title one is students requiring free or reduced lunch, right? And that is based on a certain percentage over the poverty line for both of those designations, am I right?
That changes, the federal government sets that and it changes. And each year, we send that information home to our families and they either apply or don't. And those that apply, they're free, or they're reduced, or they're not selected in for either one. They don't qualify for either one.
Got it. That comports with the way I understood it. We're taking out, we're saying there's an annual meeting and then there's additional meeting. I'm just wondering why, this is, there's a lot of red lines on this, this is a big, big change. I'm just wondering what the intent of all the changes are here, what we're trying to accomplish. That's, I mean, there's some things in here that I like, some things in here that I...
I think a lot of them are just to make the language more inclusive of not just, not parents, but make it broader.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I noticed that as well.
That's a lot of it.
And the other parts of the language change are to try to engage and involve parents more.
Can you, can you point to where you felt that was?
Sure, so the education of children is viewed as a cooperative effort among parents, gardeners, school, and community. That language is in support of really trying to engage the parent more. That's why you see family, community engagement, again, instead of just parent involvement. Engagement has a little bit stronger connotation to it, when you're doing, when you report out on grant usage, how the funds are used, and you have to report out on community, parent engagement. That's different now, those than involvement used to be. Involvement meant, we sent an email on, invited you to a pizza, if you showed up, great. If you didn't, no big deal. Now engagement means you have to make a concerted effort multiple times to engage the community. So engage is really a language change in the grant systems management. So it aligns now, this policy now aligns with that language when you report out on how we try to engage parents and the community in this process.
That's very helpful. What kind of grants are those that we...
Title one's really, titles, one of the ones we have to get, make a concerted effort to engage, right? So I have to meet in the summer with parents and offer that, and, you know, I might only get two parents that come in. So then I have to do, I have to offer it again, whereas before, I only had to do it once annually.
Gotcha.
Now it says more than...
So this gives you opportunities to fulfill what are typical grant requirement, or grant writing requirements.
It supports, it creates more opportunities for us to try to engage the community and family, yes.
I see.
Because before, as you can see, it just said, at the required annual meeting, which indicates it only was once. Now it's, you can have at least one, you know, so you can keep trying. And the grants management system could kick back if you said, I only tried once. They would say, that's not the intent. The intent of this was that you would reach out a few times and try to get family, you know, to come and engage in the process. In our larger schools where Kate referenced, they get, you know, $100,000, that's a large group of parents. So if you only offer one meeting a year, that's not really adequate as far as trying to engage the community and parents. So that was part of the language changes in here, is really to hold the school more accountable and really make a more, I would say, concerted effort to do that.
Especially in those schools that do it, their programming runs the whole year. Like ours runs, it's part of our summer program, because it's such small funds. It's very different, like, for us engaging with the people that come to summer versus schools that the kids are doing it all year and they're doing it in a variety of different, you know, disciplines or departments. It's very different, so it is great to be have that more collaborative piece. It's just a very different model, depending on the size of the school and the number of people that qualify for targeted or whole school assistance.
And I do like that it pays for that, right? It pays for that more engagement, I think there's something in here...
You can write it into the grant should you choose to. Like, let's say, always when we offer pizza and food, we tend to get more people to come, right? So you can, you actually can't write food anymore into the grant, but you used to be able to write food into the grant and pay for the pizza. So it's not a great example, because you can't write food in anymore.
You can write, you can do books though, so like if you were a literacy...
You could do giveaway books, you could do, like, for example, another district in SAU 16, through title one funds, and we're bringing in, not upward bound, outward, outward bound, to come and do a lot of stuff for, to engage kids this summer, as part of the summer program. Where before, we didn't have the funding, because they've increased our title one funding, because we fit the formula and we have more kids. Then we try to do some cool things that maybe we couldn't do before with these grant funds.
Right. So from the title one funds, you get more, you can use those funds to be able to create more community engagement to do it.
You can, yeah. So like, the families will be invited to come and participate with outward bound, upward, I'm getting outward bound. I was in upward bound, so I keep having a block. So they'll come and do some activities with their kids and things like that. That can count as community, parent engagement when we write up the grant. Well, maybe we brought this service in, we did these activities to build trust and foster relationships and blah, blah, blah. And then we invited the parents in to join their students, you know, their families to do these activities. That would pay for that activity.
And the grants are federal grants?
They're federal grants that are distributed through the state.
Okay, but it is a federal grant.
So it's, all of our, all of our grants, title one, two, four, are all federal monies that then get filtered through the state of New Hampshire and their formula.
Can I ask one more question? What are title one staff? They describe, it says, it says that the title one program shall receive from the school principal and title one staff, an explanation of the reason supporting blah, blah, blah.
Title one staff are staff that work with title one students, because we don't have any whole school. So in other words, a district that reaches that whole school, any of your staff then would be considered title one, because the whole school, every kid in it could be, title, only kids, only kids that are identified as title one can only work with specific staff, particularly if you're paying staff out of title one funds. Some schools that get more money pay salaries, title one salaries, out of the title one funds. So those staff can only work with title one kids.
But we don't do that.
We've had people part-time in the past.
We have part-time, okay.
They work part-time, we've had like $17,000 to make that work and they've seen certain students do it.
Got it, so we're taking like a bucket of money that we get and we're allocating it, and that's what that means, that's what that designation is.
That's why, that's why, because our, sorry.
Sorry, that means that those people can only work with designated title one kids, because we're not a whole school.
And they have to use certain programming, there's a lot of rules around that. So like, for example, that's why for us, because the money is small, we're using it for our summer. So they're working with our students that receive intervention already, they're the targeted students that are getting it, and they're paid from that, and that's, so they're aligned to title one students.
That makes sense.
And that's only some of our people, students that come at the summers, not all.
Great, thank you. Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
All right, so on five, it's defining like who we should be getting into this evaluation. It's all in that new language. And it's talking about, so it says that we want to create more participation, it describes different groups. Obviously economically disadvantaged, because economically disadvantaged are fundamentally how the whole program is derived. But then it adds other groups, which is perfectly fine. Is that for grant writing purposes as well typically?
Yeah, so when you, because again, we're not whole school, we as a school have to set criteria to identify who our title one students will be, who qualifies for title one services. That varies, that criteria varies from school to school. One of them has to be economic, because that's how the formula works.
Should be key and fundamental.
Right, so, well, that's, that's one, because that's where you start, right? But then usually there's an academic cut score. If we have a school of high academic kids, we can't say our cut score is going to be under 5% or three grade levels below, because we don't have any kids three grade levels below. So that's how those cut scores, so that's why it's different from school to school. You have to look at your whole population, you know, you have 10% of your kids that are SES need and then you have, you want to keep that kind of level. So what cut score academically meets this 10%? So even though they may meet the free and reduced lunch criteria, they may be super smart and don't need title one services, right? But you still have that percentage generally of the RTI, of this percent of 10% to 15% of students that probably need some kind of intervention, a title one intervention. Because if they're receiving title one, it has to be above and beyond what every other, what every other kid gets, because we're not a whole school. If we were a whole school, every kid could get it all.
Sure, understood.
But because we're not, the kids that are title one have to get above and beyond what every other kid gets. So if every kid in the school gets an intervention, they have to get two, let's say.
Yes.
Because it's above and beyond what every other kid gets.
Makes total sense.
So that criteria you set really depends, you have to look at your current school population, academically, SES, other things that are mentioned here, to set that cut score so you get the amount of kids that fit, what percentage makes sense for your building. In SAU 16, our cut score academically is generally higher
Right.
than other schools in other areas that kids aren't coming in at a level of proficiency. We're fortunate, generally speaking, in SAU 16, so our cut scores are generally higher.
Right, all right, that makes total sense. I appreciate all that explanation around that. And are you comfortable that this is the right way to target in number five, those various groups to write for grant?
It just says they'll include, doesn't say that those are the only.
Sure.
So, yes, because these are barrier, areas of barriers, that's pretty common.
I'm all for getting federal money and getting our share of federal money.
It's kind of like they design it as best they can for those who are furthest from the opportunity that a lot of us naturally have, right? So if I have parents at home that went to college and had all that education and then I have access to so much versus somebody who's far away from that opportunity because of their background or because of their, the makeup of their family or their social background, background, this is all created so that they have even the playing field a little bit.
Sure.
That's where that kind of, so listing out those groups is probably why.
Sure, I agree. I think that, to me, just the difference is you've got, the fundamental criteria is a certain level over the poverty line. And then everything else is all these additional factors that I think Esther just described. You may have some students who are, who are economically disadvantaged, but they're, but they're academically performing quite well.
Yep.
So you have to be very specific in the ability to be able to get extra resources to the right people at the right time.
And remember, number five is really speaking to that parent engagement.
Right.
So in other words, that's, that's offering translation services. So if we need a translation, we could pay, we could use Title I funds to pay for translations. So if you had a parent come in, English wasn't their first language, we would have a translation, translator there. So those, they're identifying barriers, really parental barriers that decrease engagement.
I get the intent. I'm good with it. I just wanted to go through that because I didn't understand Title I very well. All right, I did some research and I wanted to know what you thought, guys thought too. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else on that one?
We used to.
Or does somebody want to make a motion to adopt KB, policy KB, Title I family and community engagement?
I will make a motion to adopt KB, Title I, family and community engagement.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to move down to the next one? KFA conduct on school property?
Yeah, any questions?
I got a question. Sorry. On 13, I think it's B 13, only thing I thought on that one, it says, refuse to comply with or obey a director of any authorized district personnel or posted rules or regulation. Call me silly and I don't know if this is the right thing, but I, I feel like we should insert the word lawful, a lawful directive. Like, I don't think that it should just be an arbitrary rule. Because we talk about all that and all the other preceding things, but then we don't really, and we, we sort of carve out this thing where basically anybody who's district personnel authorized agent of the school can say, you gotta do this or you get, you can get a no trespass and you can't ever come back to the school. I mean, I think that's in reality what we're saying there. I'm not trying to take away the, the ability for people to make decisions about people who are not acting properly, but I just thought that that might be a good addition. So I'll leave it at that. It was really the only thing that I had on that one.
The only, the only concern I have with injecting the word lawful is that it may not be a law, but I'm thinking of a sporting event and the athletic director, there's a bunch of kids that are being on sportsman like, it's not law to be yelling, you guys are jerks or whatever.
A hundred percent.
So I would like the athletic director to have permission to say, you need to be removed from this game.
A hundred percent. But should they also, should we also include the ability to provide a no trespass at the same time in that case?
I think the ability because.
Going forward?
I think it depends on, is this a repeat offense? Is this the 10th game the kid's gotten thrown out of and they, every game they go and they're, they're rude and chucking food at.
I agree. But should it be, should, should there be an appeal process? Should somebody else be able to make a decision on that? It's, it, it takes it.
I just, I'm, I would prefer, from a school point of view, to not have lawful in there. I think it gives us flexibility to have no trespassing orders when needed. I can honestly tell you, I can think of, in the time I've been here, maybe four, and it was all to do with parents.
Oh, I'm sure. No doubt.
As a school administrator, having a repeat offense of a, an adult that is belligerent and attacking staff and you've asked repeatedly to leave and they come back and they do it again, you finally say, like, you're not meeting with any of my staff, you're only meeting with me and they're continuing to come and do it, at some point you're like, you're just not welcome here. You're not unless, like, you're going to actually, like, it's unsafe, right? And that, and that's not lawful. Like, people have a right to say whatever they want to say, but when they're pounding your desk and screaming, you're like, we're not doing this. We are adults, this is not how we behave.
And I totally agree. So I, I'd be, I like the lawful part, then if you were to say, hey, then you have, there's a court order restraining. I think you go to that point. You say, hey, this individual should not, never come back to school. And it's under RSA whatever, six thirty-five-two, subsection three B three, defiance of a court order restraining. You say, hey, this person is not allowed, but it's not a simple, you can't trespass. If I'm at my house and somebody comes up, I can say, you're not allowed to be here. And that person can't come here anymore. But this is like public, right? It's a public trust.
But when they have threatening, getting a restraining order is a lot of hoops. It, it is. It's a lot of hoops and it's a system and it, and it's a process. We can issue a lot of no trespassing with, through, immediately. And I have been very thankful that we've been able to do that with two parents in particular. And I can tell you, it's not a knee jerk reaction. It's either when I have felt very unsafe and threatened just by demeanor and language, not a threat.
That's fair.
The person didn't threaten me, I'm going to kill you.
Right.
Or I'm going to punch you in the face, but they're posturing, they're yelling, they're swearing. I, I don't.
Does this person ever have a recourse?
This is the.
For, for redemption of the act, of their action at that time?
If it's the, I'm not going to do it the first time.
Okay.
If it's the seventh or eighth time and I've asked this person and tried to meet with this person and, and in two situations that I've experienced personally, that's been the case, we try and try and try and every time we end up with you're calling me swears and doing this and I, I just, I'm not, I'm not going to do it anymore. I've tried. I've tried so many times and they've, it's not, I just can't have you here anymore.
Okay, I'm supportive of that.
And they're upset. And so I like, I do like that ability to do that. Do we do it very often? No. Is it for repeat situations? Yes. I can honestly say it's, I've never experienced where we've just said, you did that once, that's it.
I'm, I'm supportive of that. I get it, a hundred percent.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have a motion to pass policy KFA conduct on school property?
I can make a motion to pass KFA conduct on district property.
All right, do you have a second?
Full second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have, do you want to go back up to EBB?
Sure. EBB is just kind of a list.
You recall EBB was that overarching policy when we did all those safeties that referenced all those ones we already passed? This is that overarching policy that just needed to, once we passed all those other safety ones.
Okay.
I think it was first round when I had all of them. This is the policy that all those policies we already passed now are all aligning.
Okay.
Any questions? I will make a motion to pass, no, what is it, accept? What's the language?
Adopt.
Approve. EBB, school safety program.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So last one.
GADA.
Yep. Verification.
Any questions? Cool. I will make a motion to accept policy GADA, employment references and verification prohibiting, aiding and abetting of sexual abuse.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Nice, everybody?
Sophie, can we just, there's a typo in the title of GADA. There's an extra E, why? It's unemployment.
Oh, yeah. Good catch, the extra E.
Okay. Anything else on the policy committee? No?
Nope.
All right, we'll move on to superintendent evaluation committee. Eric?
Yes. Apologies, we won our softball game.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, yes, we're going to be meeting on June 21st as a committee to be able to discuss in sort of general terms what we'd like to see in next year's evaluation. The superintendent. It would be great if we could get some input on that as a board prior to that. We have a few mechanisms for doing so. I'm sure we can talk about that. And then we would like to also discuss feedback for the final evaluation for Dr. Ryan. And we anticipate doing that hopefully today in our non-public session. And then we'll be able to provide that feedback and present to the next, the next joint work meeting.
Okay. Great. Anybody have anything on that? No? Okay. Moving on to SMS administrative team report.
So in the board reports, we just met, we did a couple of things. We put, I think it's under here, actually.
You have the, I think you all got the draft.
I think it was in your.
Your packet.
Board packets of the proposed presentations that we would have prepared for the board meetings next year.
It is after the last.
Can I ask a question about that? Um, December, no, January, for the social emotional learning, one of the goals that we passed for the board was to do a DEIJ training. And we put that on this calendar as well and maybe a good place to put it would be in January under social emotional learning.
Is that a training for the board or?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions for?
I have a comment, a question on that. Given that fact, if you look back to your.
Yep.
Approved calendar. If you look on December 20th, you have the six to seven board meeting, you know, FAC board budget thing, and then your meeting starts at seven. I, I'm wondering if you want to start that meeting at five, so five to six could be DEI training.
And not have it in January?
Oh, I'm sorry, January. So I would do the same thing in January.
What are you proposing here, Esther? Two, two different early stages?
No, well, Sophie's saying DEI training at the school board meeting.
Yeah.
December and January are the FAC ones already from six to seven.
They're already double booked.
So they're already double booked. So you may, either, I might recommend you do it at.
October?
The October meeting.
October might make sense because we're also doing that full SAU-wide training as well, the.
Oh, yeah.
No, and, sorry, I'm just thinking, that wasn't any thing like, stop. Remember, and I don't know if, you also want to do another training above that as individual board, but October is the month that the joint board is doing your implicit bias training.
Oh, okay.
Because that's what we're doing with the whole thing.
I was going to say, this is, yeah, okay.
This is separate from that.
So I would think that maybe, how about November? That's just, that doesn't involve FAC. That's just the regular presentation of the budget, which is basically, Kate, you know, presents the budget to the board first blush. There isn't a whole bunch of questions generally. Usually it's just a presentation, then you take away and look at it and then start meeting and dissecting it. So I, I might think about doing that in November, just because you'll just have done the implicit bias training, so you might have some questions and thoughts about that. And you won't be heavy into budget FAC meetings and it just, I think it'll be, I think it'll be long, that's all.
Great.
So it was November, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just writing notes for Chris, I don't want to.
Yeah, that's great.
And then for each of these discussion topics, do you envision like Anne would come to the March meeting?
So she might, depending on.
Okay.
You know, I think there are certain people that will come at certain times. So like the social emotional learning piece would certainly be, we have an SES team, right? That makes sense. When we're talking about some of the stuff around like fall benchmarks, that would be our literacy and math team.
Right.
And potentially members of speech and OT because we do a lot of screening in the fall for our youngest kids with those sort of developmental skills. So that would be, it would really depend on, Tim might want to come to facilities. It makes sense to hear from the people that are, you know, most closely associated with the different topics.
Okay. Gratitude supports, we have a whole team for that, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Does anybody have anything else on that? So do we need to do anything?
Nope. Just, you just want to see that list and then this will go forward and be on the agendas.
Okay.
Listed.
Great. Will this also go on the website so people can see it? It'll go up there? Okay.
Yes.
That's great.
Can I steal five minutes? So we had, just, this works, watch it not work for me, but, so we had our final staff meeting of the year this afternoon. And I wanted to share, so every year we do what's called Champions for Children, where this, sorry, the staff has an opportunity to nominate people they feel are just true champions of children throughout the school year. And we receive a number of nominations every year. Let's just actually close this up for a second. Every year, and then we bring it to our leadership team. There's a, we have a 13-member leadership team, SMS leadership team. Well, that's fancy. And I wanted to share with you the two people that were selected by the leadership teams. I think it's important just to see the work of the, the staff. So the first one was nominated by Lindsay Gettis, who's one of our third, third grade teachers, and this is what her, what she wrote. I would like to nominate Matt Green for Champions for Children this year. Matt's consistency is appreciated by both the students and the adults. He is so dependable and brings a great attitude to every situation. Anytime Matt is called on the radio, he is quick to respond and often checks in without any prompting at all. When he enters the room, he enters calmly and takes in what he is, what is going on before intervening. Although he spends his days working with students who can take a lot of energy, he always carries a positive and calm presence. Matt allows kids to start the day or any minute fresh every time they need it. His patience stands, his patience stands out among his many great qualities. Matt seems just as happy to play a game with a student or participate in a classroom discussion as he is to respond to a challenging call or a heavy parent meeting. He always makes himself available even when he hasn't had a break all day. I know I can count on him and have absolute trust in his knowledge of students and their needs. He attacks each obstacle with equal parts empathy and professionalism. Above all else, he makes every student he works with feel validated and special. Our school is so lucky to have him as part of our team. So Matt has been with us just over a year and a half. He's our BCBA, so Board Certified Behavior Analyst. And he was recognized by Lindsay Gettis, a third grade teacher today.
That's great. Thank you.
Awesome, yeah. And then our second one, which is a little bit longer and I apologize, but there were a lot of people that nominated this person. So Ashley Healy submitted this on behalf of several people for someone else. Even though she will not be happy that I'm shining the spotlight on her, it is without question that I nominate Danny Devlin for Champions for Children Award. I've had the absolute pleasure of working with Danny for over four years. Truly, she makes work so fun, whether it be making volcanoes that explode, organizing scooter races, dressing up for any silly activity, or even adding some more practical joke fun, it is all to create an engaging and joyful learning environment. Our time together really blossomed over the last three years as SMS shifted into the partnership model that we currently have. I always knew she was good, but working side by side is, it was made very evident just how exceptional she truly is. Danny exudes the perfect combination of safety, boundaries, humor and connection that all kids and adults crave. She gets to know her kids on a deeply personal level and provides learning experiences to capitalize on their interests while also supporting their individual goals. She provides a safe space for risk-taking and gives her students the tools to believe in themselves. Whether it's creating vowel picture cues to help solidify sounds, flashing a brag tag to provide positive reinforcement, or co-designing behavior plans with her students, facilitating lunch bunch and snack groups to support friendship skills, or getting an entire class an entire class to chant, Miss Healy, drink your water at the regular intervals, Danny always makes sure everyone gets what they need. While Danny supports all students, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge this. Danny has an uncanny ability to reach the kids who need us the most. She pushes through protective barriers and is welcomed with smiles and hugs even though she is not a hugger by nature. Her humor can make even the angriest child smile. She understands behavior in a way I can only hope to understand, and I have learned so much from watching her presence. I can't begin to count the times I've started to brainstorm a problem with her and she has said, why don't we just ask the kid, what do they think? Why don't we plan what the kid thinks will work? She puts students first all the time. There were periods in between those words. This year, this year asked more of her than ever and she has faltered, she has never faltered or backed out. I wish all SMS students and all SMS staff could have the opportunity to work with Danny. Our kids are in a better place because of her and her team is in a better place because of her contributions both in knowledge and in execution. And then it goes on, I'm not going to, it's going to take forever, but several other people also submitted quotes on behalf of Danny and just her work that she has done with students. So it was a really special like afternoon to get to recognize them. And we always do the last staff meeting of the year. And it was just a really like emotional afternoon to be able to see your colleagues in that way and to be able to celebrate them. And like, it was great. Danny's a very shy person. We made her sit in this worldly chair and everybody's eyes are at the gym. It was awesome. She was a shade of red. It was great.
She's an ESP here.
Yeah, she's an ESP here.
Great. Thank you for sharing that.
Yep. And then I did want to quickly, so we did, Kayla Yanakopoulos is one of our speech language pathologists. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Kayla. And she had reached out to me about a month ago and she was like, I want to do, I want to run the final staff meeting. I have an idea. And I said, absolutely. So here. Oh, okay, that was way too long.
Okay.
All right. So I just want to.
We're very competitive.
This one, not. So this is us playing Hungry Hippo this afternoon in the gym on scooters.
My legs were so sore.
So I don't have to let you watch the whole videos, but we had a really good time. That was the, that was the final event of the day. And here is, I wonder if, Kate, you might be able to be seen on this one.
I'm just kidding.
Here is our relay race.
Wow, you were into it.
So they, they were in teams of relay races and they had to run down with a balloon. And there was a sippy, a solo cup, and they had to blow up their balloon to hold the solo cup in the balloon and run back without holding the cup up. It was.
So you had to hold your breath while you were running.
Look at them. It was.
We had to hold our breath while running.
Absolutely epic today. So 136 adults in the gym this afternoon having an absolute, it was just, I mean, the whole, it was a very, it was a great way to kind of cap out a year. And it was just, I thought you guys would love to see sort of just the joy that we're experiencing. We're really lucky.
We're fairly competitive by nature. People were like, don't join the team if you're okay with losing. Don't join the team.
Ricky Saltz was doing everything two-handed because he was like, I have to beat everybody else. It was really, it was great. So.
He wasn't on his team, so I was excited.
You actually wouldn't let people join the team unless they promised to. But we just thought it would be important just to highlight our staff at the end of the year. We're really fortunate to work with the people we work with.
So are those staff meetings right after school?
So we have two a month. We have, and to be honest, childcare is a huge issue for so many staffs. So we have one in the morning and one in the afternoon. We alternate.
Oh, I see.
The first of every month is in the afternoon from 3:15 to 4:15.
Okay.
Second of the month is from 7:15 to 8:10.
Oh, I see.
It's also outlined in the contract.
Yep, okay. Secondly, I'm wondering, I think that's so great. Actually, do you have that with my staff, too? And I love that. I'm wondering if it's appropriate for us as a board to send a note or, I don't know what you think about that.
To who?
To the two.
I think they would be honored to be recognized.
Yeah.
Their work, they tire, they're tireless. They're great.
I know. Yeah, I actually just met Mr. Green the other day, so.
Oh, you did?
Well, yeah, during, whatever, the showcase. But yeah, I don't know. I would be happy to take that on. The board feels that's appropriate.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anything else, Kate? All right, I guess we can move on to old business. We need to talk about meal prices going up.
Yep. And Kate, feel free to jump in. Right now, the lunch is 3:15. The recommendation's to go to $3.30, so a 15 cents increase. And then breakfast, it's $1.70 to go to an even $2. That's just to offset expenses in the federal formula and.
Yeah, the federal government requires that every year you do a minimum, at least it was last time I checked, you have to increase by a minimum of 10 cents every year to keep up with the federal government because they obviously reimburse for the free and reduced. And so you have to go at 10 cents increments. At least for lunch, it's not the same for breakfast, but, so it's part of that equation, but then also you think about the cost of food.